It's one fifty eight. We keep going. Monday, March fourth, twenty twenty four, two P M, County Court Work Session. On the topic of the basically County Health Services, Home Health Hospice, R H C Health Department, everybody, all of our healthcare services, structure, organization. Where do we want to go?
Dispatch is in here, they're provided.
Dispatch?
Yeah.
They get their their status changed, is that what you're talking about?
No, I mean.
Just in general.
They've always kind of been a healthcare provider, right? They give emergency response.
Triage.
Triage, you know, they teach people CPR on the phone.
Interesting aspect, we haven't considered that.
They're supposed to legally have a medical directive. The first thing they're like, uh, thing about how to give like CPR instructions is you may not use this without a medical.
That's when I hit that. I assume that training happened like at the state level or something, I didn't know it was over steam, but.
We can incorporate them later.
Okay, yeah, well, I'm making sure that that kind of protocol and procedure, maybe that's a conversation with our new nine one one supervisor.
So, um, I don't know, I don't know where you want to start that, I can start with. My proposal for the structure for the for County County Health Services. Was to hire, create the position of a Health Services Administrator. And which would be an overall managing umbrella over all of our health service providers, home health hospice, R H C Health Department. Uh, which would also be the, uh, the, uh, Public Health Director as well. So it's not, it's not adding to, I mean, it is adding to, but it's, it's. Not having both of those positions, so the funding, my idea was the funding basically for the. Health Services Administrator would be partially covered by that. What's already budgeted for the Health Department Director. That was, that was my direction, I started it, proposed it, then. Bulletin it, but I'll admit I'm going to leave early before having this discussion, so.
And what was the main reason you wanted to do that?
Well, I believe that there are, you know, we have, we have home health and hospice and R H C and Health Department on the other side of the street. It's like they're two competing entities and I'd like to bring them under one umbrella and find efficiencies, whether those efficiencies are in. Are in, um, billing, uh, or staff. Facilities, equipment, whatever that might be. But it's not a, it's not a role, and I don't know how in the past my predecessors were able to, to manage this. So not being medical professionals, and that's not what I'm trying to be and I don't want to be. Um, but in order to manage all of it appropriately, I think that's what we needed in that role was a managing medical professional.
Which is that, uh, Public Health Administrator piece with the state, is that kind of what you're referencing?
Well.
Cause currently, that's what you're pointing to be. Due to how we've historically done it, or?
I'm the local Public Health Authority.
We are.
Or we are.
We're the local Public Health Authority, but you're the.
Local Public Health Administrator.
Administrator.
It's not, it's not in my wheelhouse, you know, there's, there's hundreds of emails that come through a day that, um. I just rely on the professionals to deal with, you know, I mean, I try to, I try to, I try to preview them and review them and see what's, uh. You know, what I might need to confer with and make sure that, which I'm sure there are, every time I've asked, they're already on top of it. That's not the issue, but the issue is. Um, if we continue that way in a, in a pseudo role that the person in this chair is, I mean, I'm, I'm just relying on the professionals.
Well, and I think originally when, um, when we did have a gap and we've gone with this interim model of, uh. Having these ladies serve, you know, in that Public Health Director position, I mean. Um, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Patty, was that, you know, we were kind of waiting for you to come into office. So that we could give you some time to be a part of the decision, but really the, the original intention from what I understood. Was that we were going to try to hire a Public Health Administrator that would come to those directors, so duties also. To fill the gap for, um, not fill the gap, but, uh, fill that position for the county and that. I didn't see it as being an oversight body for all the health industries for the county, but. You know, that's where internally I'd like to hear, you know, from those that actually do the work. You know, what kind of role you would like to see structured, you know, what, what would work best? Is it just having between these departments, is it having a committee, a Health Services Committee of, of those, um, department heads? That would, you know, have a, a more structured role of meeting together and working together as department heads over those types of services. Um, even the Public Health Administrator, because before we called it a director, really I felt like we should have always been hiring an administrator. Instead of a director, because the director didn't always come with qualifications that was necessary to be that administrator. And so part of what we're trying to correct was this seat, like you're saying, should not be wearing that hat. We need to be hiring that Public Health Administrator to serve over public health. But we have public health, we have R H C, and then we have, uh, home health hospice, and so, you know, I, I know you're kind of trying to coordinate them, but I. I'm not sure. From, you know, the staff, what that coordination would fit best under? Is it, you know, having this Public Health Administrator be. That, that one person or is it the department heads being required to have a more structured way of working together?
And, and I'll throw out a different view, I, it was my understanding when the remain arrangement. Regarding the Public Health Director role was established, that was done when, um, Judge Reynolds was here and when there were a lot of circumstances that. Uh, almost an emergency situation where we had to do it and it's been going fine so far. I don't know what you said about, um, all that administration stuff, that wasn't anything I necessarily grasped the same way. But just looking at it until I hear more from you guys is. If there, if there's a need for efficiencies in the staff stuff that the judge mentioned, then let's talk about that. But if that's not that big a concern, if it's more the discomfort of, of the county administrator saying medical's complicated and, you know. How does it sound to you guys when we get into the discussion on? Public Health, R H C, um, Home Health Hospice, that the directors of those do their stuff. And that we as the, the Health, Public Health Authority, that we have like regular work sessions with all three represented. You know, the head of each one doesn't have to have all the staff there, um, with us. And you tell us what's going on, you tell us where there's a problem, you tell us your asks, you know, whatever. Or, you know, and, and be real frank, you know, and, and just say, okay, how can we solve this? And we stay out of the medical stuff, but if there's something that has got to come for us, to us for approval or anything, of course, then you brief us very well on it. Um, but it would require regularly getting together, I would say, you know, monthly at first till we see if it's needed and then as needed. Um, but that's just my view from the way I kind of operate, so I just want to hear more from everybody. Is this like open conversation or? I don't know, I mean, anyways, we call that.
Well, work sessions, like third board work sessions are usually this body, but again, this is not, I'm not trying to keep this. You guys have the information, really, it's your workplace, so, so I'm not gonna stand to those rules, because normally that's what a work session would be.
But this one, we need a lot of input on.
Yes, so, so yes, I would open the floor to those of you who work in those departments to, to speak to the, those topics.
So currently, um, we have a small need for the admin piece. Um, I think between myself, Vicky and Sarah, we're covering a lot of the admin fees. Right now, what Bill is doing for us is signing the amendments. Um. And just, um, like we've got some, um, triennial reviews that are coming up and not something that I've been, has to be at least be a part of. Um, and really, other than that, I attend the meetings, we, we do the quarterly reports, all of those things are getting done. Um, I guess my question though, before we kind of marched down that aisle is. What is your intention with the admin for the county? What do you see, I know you're trying to look at restructuring, how you guys operate, what are you looking at? Um, for that admin piece, is that somebody that would also be able to fill this role so that that comes back off of Bill? Or, um, just seeing practically, like I, I worry about cutting one more person in the bureaucracy. So we have department heads and then we've got an admin piece for the Health Services. We have an admin piece that's for the county and then we have you guys, that's a lot of bureaucracy. So I just was, just kind of wanted to see what your guys' plans were, if you consider that piece and what you're trying to do with your restructuring.
I think that the, um, the medical health role is, is unique in that. I would like to have a relationship with the departments in the county court, as I sort of just described.
Yeah.
That's my reaction to that question without any more thought at this time.
Well, and I think you, you're all aware that we have been having work sessions to, I feel that's that county administration piece. Um, you know, I, I do believe that as we look at structure in the future for County County, it's very important for us to be able to. Retain the services of the county administrator, um, just for consistency of, of those services, you know, those skills, the education that comes with it. And, and the like, and so. I think, you know, we're hoping in the future to be able to function as a Board of Commissioners, like a lot of other counties. Uh, we're working with the legislature on the county court piece. Uh, it didn't happen in the short session, but we're taking that back to the long session, which would then, the only thing that, that creates a county court currently. Is the fact that probate's assigned to the county and there's no way to offload that completely, uh, until the statutes change. And so, you know, as we look at other counties that function, uh, throughout the state, that's a, a model, you know, that could be. Come how County County does it, you know, the Board of Commissioners, the County Administrator. And then, you know, even the Board of Commissioners can be more than just three people in the long, long run, you know, those are things. As you're all constituents and voters in County County, you know, to, to think about, be aware of. And so I would hope, uh, that we can get there in the future, uh, to be able to add that county administrator piece. Because there's so many, uh, as Bill's pointed out, there's so much policy and everything that. You really need an administrator focusing on, uh, the employee side. And then the role of the commissioner has a, a different role by statute. And so trying to navigate that in the future, I think is going to be, uh, a good service to our employees as well as to the, the structure of our governing body. But I, I do share your concern of creating another administrative layer between our department heads and that county administrator. Because there's health service things that are specific to your roles. And the ways you have to interact with the state, with your reporting to the state, but then there's. You guys just as county employees, and so that county administrator to me has the duty and role to service you. You know, in your duties as county employees, in your roles as county employees, in understanding that side of it. But that's where I don't know from the Public Health Administrator piece, what you have currently covered. In, in where you feel good with that and where there's any further gap in a potential trying to fill. An, an additional role or restructure of how we're currently doing it. Because I know, you know, what's required of the state for signature and everything else, you, you guys are already preparing all that and bringing it up to the judge. But is there anything else that would be necessary to put in place? That would, that would, you know, prevent a gap, uh, you know, on your end?
Well, if I may, I just, what I'm hearing, as I listen to Commissioner Schumann and you guys, this. I mean, if we, if we have an administrator at some point, they're gonna kind of do, like she said, the county employee, you know, the policies, you know. Make sure you get your evaluations in, oops, you're running over budget, oh, that kind of thing. That's administration, but authority, that's where I think the county court and the health agencies.
By staff.
Need to be direct with us, you know, and that will be on, uh, something to wrestle with on a direction we. We have to go in a direction, what direction do we want to go? Uh, how can we cooperate more if there is a, a need for that, you know, various things, but I also like to hear from Matt too, his reaction.
What, what do you do exactly, Bill, for us? Sorry, I'm new.
Well.
Kelly mentioned that you sign what? Off on.
Yeah, Public Health has a lot of amendments, so.
The contract with, between the county and the state for public health funding.
So you do same for our agency, I guess, right?
Yeah, would, yeah, funding, funding, uh, contracts, anything like that comes to the, uh, court, comes to my office, so.
It comes to that administrator part of his duties.
But, but I have a question, does home health and hospice, because it's not required that counties do that, do that cut out a lot of? The administration that.
We don't have the funding, they don't have the funding like, like Public Health has and.
So do you have a lot of paperwork from them or not as much?
No, not as much.
Maybe, maybe that's part why.
Yeah, I haven't really heard a lot about them.
It seems like we review policies when you have policy changes, we've signed up on that, Julie's brought that to us in the past. But that's, uh, tended to be my only interaction, uh, previous.
Yeah, well, I mean, as far as your administrator, that, that piece goes, um, umbrella over one person over both, but if you want to take it back further. I mean, there was one director for both entities when Cheryl Enniston was running it. So I don't know exactly how the judge ran things back then. Um, working together, that's a great, I mean, more closely, we worked great together already in close, I mean. I'll head on over there and check out a patient, you know, specialty that they fill, um, but I like to take it deeper, absolutely. I mean, there are certain things we can utilize our providers for on home health phases and. You know, talking from a money standpoint, get some additional funding or, um, things that we wouldn't be able to purchase to do in the home unless we had a provider. But that's something for us to talk, you know, we don't want to bore you guys with that medical stuff, so, um, anyway.
And I think to one of your points, Bill, was that we are competing agencies.
I was gonna ask you about that, was that?
We are not competing.
And if I say competing, I don't think I'm, that, that was the wrong choice of words.
And I don't want people to get that idea though either, so.
Right, because we are not competing, we work together, yeah.
Well.
Quite a bit, actually.
I, I have some, but I have some concerns and I can be frank, but I don't, this, I'm just being frank, if we want to discuss this openly. Um, I have some concerns, the, and, and, and they're, they're, they're. They can seem minor, but I do have some concerns, okay? One concern, the, um, the, uh, the vehicle, the van. Um. I know home health and hospice would like to use it more and it hasn't been used much. Um, I noticed it's gone the other day, I drove by there, noticed it was gone, I don't know where it's at.
That's just in the back, park him up.
Around back now, instead of in front?
Yeah, so we can find snow.
Okay.
Um, and it's been offered up many, many times, um, it even has home health and hospice, the lumber on the back.
The wall on the back, because.
And that's available and I love that, so showing, of course, also.
To be completely honest with you, there's ideas, but what are you gonna do with it, right? Unless you have these ideas, go for it, I talked to the general a little bit about today, one of my ideas. And they also have their ideas, some of them streamlining, what do you say, uh, towards the youth, right? Um, again, things that would be, uh, between us, not to bore you, but, um, there are ideas, just gotta go forward with them. So it's, yeah, I don't know.
I don't think there's ever been a time that we told home health and hospice they can't use the van.
You know, and I, again, new, so I don't have any on that side of it, um, but have ideas. And I know these guys won't be opposed to them, talk about them and.
Yeah, it's there to use, that's why.
But that, and I would like to see that, because that's a, it's a county resource, it's not one or the other resource, it's a county resource.
That's one of those things we would need to utilize providers with us, you know, in that umbrella that you were talking about.
But I, I've done several visits together with Matt, where we'll go and visit a patient together, if it's something that. You know, needs that provider element for whatever reason, um, and I feel like we haven't had any problems with any.
I think.
Any of each other.
Yeah, um, they're just easier to utilize from our standpoint, home health, you know, so.
So another.
Public health, so why not, you know, they've been talking about bringing it all together full circle.
Yeah. So another, another concern I had was, um, modernization in healthcare dollars. What are the restrictions or what are the, what are the purpose of those? I mean, is it all healthcare, is it specific healthcare?
It's healthcare and it's supporting, it's supporting employees to be able to do more.
Okay.
So really, it's, it's definitely staffing based.
Um, so the, the recruitment funds that were, that were used. Was the people at home health and hospice brought into that side of it? Brought into that element of it?
That's a, a public health fund.
Specific, yeah.
It's specific, so that's why I was asking, like, the dollars were specific to certain purposes or?
Correct, yes, under public. Those are public state, so they're for climate change, um, equity, um. And if we are to use it towards, like, if we're gonna help a community. Um, entity, it has to be around that, so we can work with, like, the fine public health, um, emergency, like, emergency kids. Like our officers, it has to be within that body of work, so we can do that, so we can kind of. I think we did that with the air filters, we get, a bunch of the air filters were there, so it just has to be within that, the umbrella.
And that's, that's home health and hospital, or a modernization in healthcare funds themselves?
Fifty one, mhm.
And, yeah, and so kind of like what you're saying, in ways that they're community wide, it's often patients that you serve in the community that could then. Utilize it, but it's not a direct funding to you.
Right, we can't give them the money.
And so that's, you know, one of those brainstorming ideas, is, you know, every time, uh, we'd be out for funding with that is, you know, exploring further ideas that could help. Uh, you know, the patients that we serve.
Part of that is environmental health, and so we give funding to Jespe to help support that. Um, because her service is sort of a public health function as part of the organization. Um, it's the same with, um, emergency planning, that's something that is a foundation of public health. And so we support that position, which is currently open, um, with additional funding. The state only really supports it halfway, and so modernization supports it to be able to. Um, health equity is another position that's open, it has funding in the modernization plan. Um, but we have not been able to hire or have the okay to move forward with hiring somebody to do that piece.
Does it always have to be the hiring or can it be the?
We try to utilize those cases.
Work and be.
We, yeah, we, we support funding for like parks and recreation, because they're doing healthy kids and teaching kids how to be healthy for a long time. So we try to push some funding over there to make sure that their pools can get opened, you know, make sure they've got safety equipment. That is part of the modernization funding, um, we work with County County Partnership the same way, they're looking at environmental health. Um, they are helping with fire plans for the communities, so then we step in and try to provide a little additional funding. So that we can look at the environmental side of the wildfire and what its effect is in our.
So when you can't, when you're trying, but you can't have been able to hire someone for a specific position, you don't have to turn those funds back. You just have to keep trying and then you can use them in related ways.
No, you don't have to, you will have to turn it back.
So depending how long the grant is for, if it's a two-year grant, a three-year grant, just depending, it's not on that long time that you have to use. If you don't use it within that time, it goes back.
So we have a real strong, like, support, these are how we're gonna do this to meet the public health, uh, metrics. And these are positions that will help with that, it's a two-year plan, so that has been just approved. And so now we have two years to deal with, just if you're talking about only modernization, that's the funding.
When modernization is over, if it ever is, um, will, um. Will the dollars stop and then the counties have to pick up trying to keep it going?
It doesn't, I don't like it, it's very, it's basic, it's foundation. And I think that's why it's geared towards staff and support staff to help the community. So it's not things.
Are those federal funds or state funds?
It's partial.
Or partial, federal, partial?
Yeah.
But it's coming through the state?
Yeah, everything gets.
There are state match dollars that go with it.
I don't think, I think they're, they delegate to the states and we have them. Right, but there's not like, the state's not, yeah, whatever comes out. Yeah, it's always, it's. Yes. And to that, you're saying, like, do you try to use what you already have when you have a new grant or whatever?
Well, I was thinking, like, what if you, you try to use it, but then at the end of the day, you weren't able to fill the position and are they gonna take money back and you've already spent it?
So the way it works is the quarterly reports that we do, kind of shows what we have spent and based on that, they kind of hold back on giving us more money.
Good.
Um, so it's not like a big take back at the end, it's kind of, just a little bit.
Thank you, very good, watching them, you want to tell us what we can spend or not spend?
She's an older girl, so if you want to know, like, your P E fifty one question, if you want to know what can you spend on? She can tell you off the top of her head, how much money there and what you've spent it on. Do you have other questions? Sounds like you have a potential on to us.
No, no, those, uh, those two will do for now, but I, um. I was just curious about the, the, I guess, P fifty one, whatever, and what the limitations were on those.
So you have, yeah, we have the P, P one, fifty one, the fifty one, there's a three and there's also a five. So, um, the P fifty one five is what we had talked about, um, and had utilized for some of the recruitment. Um, we had talked about maybe having a grant writer, um, help, you know, they could be paid out of that or L P H A. But could other people or community, um, departments even can add money to that and get some grant funding? Um, the other piece that we can use out of that is this wage comparison that we had talked about last summer.
Yeah.
You know where we're at, but.
I just sent an email Friday to L C O G. Um, because it's been a couple of weeks since I heard from them last and wanting to know what their status is, so I haven't heard back from them. But I'm trying to get the contract going with them so we can begin that process.
Right, so out of that funding, we can pay for this, um. You know, take a look at that contract and see if we already land, um, so that one, we have, um, five years to live, I think. So it gets to sit back and we can use it kind of for some of this special funding, but it has to directly relate back to the Department of Health Agent. So I guess just as a consideration, since we're being frank, I, um, I feel like the admin piece is getting taken care of fairly easily. So between what you're able to sign, um, the meetings that I attend, Sarah attends and Vicky attends. Um, in the recording that's required, I think that that's getting done. Um, my recommendation is to see if you can do an interim piece until you guys figure out if you're gonna have a county admin. Um, I think it would be helpful to kind of slide this position in if you guys decide to go that way.
An interim.
What do you mean by sliding?
Um, so.
Budget process?
Yeah, so, yeah, it would be. Yeah, so, yeah, it would be just that little piece, which is what Bill's doing now, that he's wanting to have, um. Maybe take elsewhere, have that done.
So a public health director will do that piece?
It would definitely be your, your county admin person that you were looking to work with. It seems like a lot of the things that come up right now are kind of HR type issues that would use a little bit of help to get, get through and get done. Um, and the admin pieces is fairly small ability. So just as a comment.
And the county administrator could potentially do the public health admin, there's some. Statute, statutory requirements of that person, like, from an education standpoint and all of that.
They do have to be a county employee, a bachelor's degree, and it can experience an offer.
Bachelor's degree in whatever.
In whatever, this is the states. West area. So that narrows it down a little bit.
So. In the budget process. Instead of, so currently we have a line that was being utilized under a public health director. But if we were to relabel that for local public health. Administrator. These, and it can be a partial FTE, that.
Um, I always have to go back and double check, so there is statutory and then there's some. There's a couple of inner places in the Oregon law where it's referenced, so it has to be employee. Has to have at least a bachelor's degree, I can't remember if it's bachelor's or master's, has that healthcare, public healthcare experience. Um, and it's supposed to be an FTE, yes, you're right, it's supposed to be a one point O FTE, um, but most of the.
Even for counties, partially.
Most of the small counties get, so like, right now, you guys have a. A waiver, um, because. Now I have to remember, what, we got a waiver for you judge for education?
And it wasn't one FTE.
And it wasn't one FTE, so we.
It wasn't, it wasn't for education, but a bachelor's degree, because it didn't.
I think it used to say master's degree, I think it changed, but I don't really remember, and then.
But probably in the public health realm.
Right, exactly.
Health related field.
Yeah, health related field, and then I think you guys also have a waiver because it's not, he obviously does not one FTE. Then it's just public health. Yeah, so it's pretty clear that we can get a waiver for the FTE component.
So with the other, um. Positions that you said were fun, you would be able to fund through the federal dollars that are coming down through the state. Is that something you would want to create, you know, a partial FTE to cover the administrative piece and then a partial FTE to cover? What you currently have funding for, for that?
Um, that piece is actually already in the budget, so that is director time, we make sure that's in there because it actually takes a lot of time to kind of monitor and. And carry those programs, um, so that piece has funding in a. Already written in, I believe it's twenty percent. Same percentage, but over two years, so modernization has funding for that. There are a couple of other positions that we need to. See if we can bring on board that already have funding, that we just need to hire for, um. And I feel like if we would have these supporting. Um, positions, it's actually just one FTE that we're thinking of, which would be a health equity coordinator and a community health worker. Um, they're two really big pushes and have a lot of. Public health need, um, that would help actually Vicki and I be able to do what we're doing a little easier.
To give it to some things that you're currently doing and be able to shift over to another.
Right. Yep, um, and we have, actually, the community health worker I included in that wage survey, so you've already received the. Um, job description, because we know it's something that we needed to have in it. Um, there is a three-year, um, EOCO grant that's offered, that would pay fully for this funding. For three years, including benefits of a community health worker, and it only would be part-time, that piece would be for the real health clinic. And then the other piece is, um, the health equity coordinator, that again is already written into the modernization plan. It's one of those extra things, we have enough staff doing it, so then Vicki and I have to be tied to try to also do those. Things that are required, and that's all part of modernization, and there's a lot.
What does that mean, to health equity?
I mean, it's, um, they're just more culturally aware of the things that will. Make sure that public health reaches every type of person that is in our community, um, and also the distant ones, so it's just really.
Cause I know during COVID, and we had to write our plan and we had to address.
Yeah, I mean, I.
That's a lot of the things that have been done here, right?
With, yeah, there's always room for improvement, but.
Yeah.
What would that person really be doing?
Well, we actually need a health equity plan, so we have to put in a state that we understand health equity. And we have a plan in place to make sure that we are, um, taking care of every different population that is in Carney County. Um, and then making sure that all of our other programs, um, are able to do that work as well, they are doing that for the whole. It's not, sometimes you feel like it's just a blockwork that they're just throwing in there, but there's various unreal. Things that need to happen to make sure that that works.
Which, it's the climate, it's the health equity, it's all the pieces that go into the modernization, I need to be addressed and turned in within the next, what, two years?
Twenty fifteen is when it's all due for harm.
Yeah, so it's like, we have to have this plan together. Coming into it halfway and knowing, like, okay, what was the original plan with, like, need someone dedicated to doing just that work and taking in and running with it? So it gets done and applied.
And that funding is already there, so our proposal is to create one FTE, community health worker, um, and then also the.
They would do both.
It very much is the same type of work.
Are they, are these positions or are these roles, are they mandated or?
The health equity is, and we need to have a plan by twenty twenty-four.
Mandated to continue to get the modernization healthcare dollars?
Um, it's just a piece of it that you have to do in the health agent. So, I mean, you can choose not to, and. We would not be holding, we would not be doing what they're requiring of us, we just, yeah, we have to.
I just like the comment that on, um, state funding as well as federal funding. Every new grant cycle has new criteria that you have to meet, so right now we're seeing equity, climate change, whatever else. Every time we get a new grant, it's gonna be another set of criteria, so it's not written in stone, and to fill a position with. For admin, it needs to be somebody who understands that, and then can quickly pivot to whatever the new requirements are. Or it just at least be aware of how to pivot. I also pulled up, um, it's under the ORS three thirty-three, division fourteen, standards for state and local public health. For the administrator, it requires. Should have the following qualifications, bachelor's degree and public health work experience in education. That demonstrates competencies in the foundational programs and that has the definition of where to get those. Upon appointment, um. That's pretty clear, shall employ full-time a local public health administrator unless. The authority approves a local public health authority's request to permit the administrator to work less than full-time. And then there's a process that you go through to make that happen, so that would be your flexible piece on if you were going to assign somebody a part time.
Or a happy FTE.
Whatever FTE you want, yeah.
How's business?
It's good.
Is it good?
And I know we talk about, um, we've got these positions and. Funding and all of that, I just wanna make sure we realize that our fund balance is at nine hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So, you know, I think that we're showing that we are making good financial decisions and, um. This funding is all for this position is already ready, we just need to launch it, um. You know, I, I hesitate when we get, you know, emails, and I think Bill has set in our budget that our employees only get. Um, a step increase, so they didn't receive one in the prior budget year. Um, and so that's kind of hard for some of us department heads to. And do those reviews and see if that person's really working, doing their job well. And should qualify for that step review, and especially when I know that we've got a fund balance holding support.
But if you wanna get back to the. Equity word, and when I'm given one department carte blanche to. Step promotions and everything else is, I mean, just because they can afford it, then how does that look across the board with other departments within the county and equity amongst those?
Well, across the board, they all should, those employees should get their steps.
But we can't afford it, is my point.
I, I hesitate to understand why staffing needs to be the first thing cut on our budgets. I'm happy to go without some other things than ever have my employees not be rewarded for that.
Well, you wanna have two pots of money, personal services and operations.
Yeah, but we would not do anything to the mass staff, I mean, nobody would be in the door.
But that's what I'm saying, you, you and your department can afford it, but. Another department can't, because they're not a revenue generating department. So that's where I had to come up with some kind of a standard to apply evenly and equitably across the board at budget time. That's, that's why I, I said that, or that's why I came up with that guideline.
I'm not sure I understand really, because, um, government entities often administer health programs where there's different pay scale. And I'm not just ignoring the county, I'm just trying to look at other examples. Um, United States Public Health Service, they pay the surgeon general, and he definitely is eligible for raises. Faster or whatever his performance is as compared to, you know, corrections, I, I don't know how it works, but I just feel like. Do we have to win them the bill? I, I think there's a model out there that exists, I guess is what I'm saying. That allows for some, if you will, wanna call it that, inequity in pay scale. Based on the kind of functions that are being provided and the kind of funds that come back in, I don't know what they are. I just know that we're just one little county and the universe is around us.
Well, and that's, we are one county as one agency. Whereas with. You know, the surgeon general and, and Health and Human Services and Department of Justice and, and, um. Department of Energy, whatever the, whatever you wanna call in there, are all different agencies that have different, different policies and. And abilities to pay within their agencies.
I hear that, I also think though, and Bill just understand, I, I have struggled with this for a long time in public health in particular. Um, I use the federal example, because that's the most widely understood, but there are certainly state examples and other counties, has anybody done any checking into? The, I mean, the answer is, all those entities you, you name, they have way more revenue and money. We've reached a budget and do those things than we do at this level, our, our county, um. Doesn't have much money. More than ever, but we, we know more about where it all is than we ever did and. How it's been going, and our, to me, this is me speaking after. What I know so far is, you know, we get property taxes, and then we get whatever the state or feds give us in different departments, and that's, that's it. And our general fund, uh, and that is where we get to make the choice on where we put the money, um. That's going way down, okay? And, um, right, cause everything goes up, and we don't wanna cut our services here, but Carney County is, is really running thin. More than, more than was publicly. Public awareness is, and it sounds so negative, but it's true, and we're really. You know, we wanna live within our means, we don't wanna chop things and, and have hardly anything, and, you know, I've talked to the Burns, a couple of counselors. City Burns, just saying, hey, we, let's have a conversation sometime soon, because I know that Urban Renewal Agency that's gonna address blight and that is awesome for you guys. We're really tight, we need to talk to you about all the property tax money we won't get that we used to get for just the county. And hospitals would have the same experience, over time, I said. That doesn't look like a whole lot to you, but over thirty years, that's nine million dollars, we need, we need it, because you can address blight all you want. For the city of Burns, and if the services aren't here to make this a, a quality place to live. You know, nobody wins, so more to come in the long term, but. The concern at least that I, I personally feel is, I don't think people understand how tight our budget really is, and if, if we can cut on the operations side. Not just. Once, but I mean, if there's a way to. Provide services across all the departments where the personnel, um. Budget doesn't have to tighten its belt and we can still provide the services well, I'd love for you to point it out and all departments to look at that and point it out to us.
So I think my question with you about that, and I'm gonna address this specifically to you, because you were the one who, you're the only one of the three who was here during the budget crisis, and we were here for the budget crisis. We were targeted absolutely during that process, and we were told, we're gonna put you in your own fund and you're gonna sink or swim. And here we are swimming, and we're not allowed to use the money. So, I mean, we were very specifically told, I believe, that Matt is also in his own budget. You will be there, you will sink or swim on your own. Now we have the money and we can't do anything with it.
Home Health Hospice is in their own fund, but it is partially supported by the general fund.
Right.
Of which, of which you guys aren't.
We are fully self-supported, public health routinely took out six figures a year from the general fund. We are not only supporting ourselves, but we're fully supporting public health, you guys are not paying anything to public health anymore. And I believe we were like mid-six figures annually that you guys spent to support public health. So. I feel like we have totally held up our end of that bargain, we have totally proved that we can do this.
That was a really.
And I'm just thinking Patty, because she was the one that was here.
I feel like the other. Look at it, but uh, the conversations all along the way then were, the original establishment of it was, this is gonna help. Pay for all the health as well and provide a service.
Right.
And then when the budget crisis hit, I mean, it was so serious that, um, it was five years that it built with. For whatever reasons, a, a non-realization and it built up and, and it was huge, and, um. I mean, we were down to saying, is your department required by the state? I mean, so it got to where public health is required, well, health clinic is not required, it's, it's not, a county must not provide that service per se, and. Thing was, well, there, it's gonna make money and it's gonna pay, help pay for that other county stuff, public health mentioned, but not limited to that. Uh, in, in, at the county court level, it wasn't just, it will pay for just public health, it was, it will, it will help pay for public health and make money for the general fund.
Uh, except for when you put us in our own fund, because we can't move the money back, so like.
I'm not.
We might report putting it in, yeah, when we were told you're stocking your own fund, like, now here we are.
Well, revenues off of the health, revenues off the health clinic are pure revenue. We could, we could spend that revenue anywhere we wanted to, but it's health-generated revenues, and it's not my intent to take it out of health services. But that's one reason why I was looking at, at putting all the health services under one umbrella. And potentially in one fund with departments in it, much like our general fund is. Because then the health, the RHC can help fund home, home health and hospice, and then it takes off the burden that is on the general fund. Was another one of my, one of my goals for putting everything under one umbrella.
So when you were talking about efficiencies and ways of cutting operating costs, it's obvious, I mean, putting that it, that. The funding that we have would help support whatever position it is the county court wanted to choose to do. Be it public health with that partial FTE on the local administrator, um, or on the clinic itself. Um. But apart from that, I think what Kelly and Sarah have spoken to very well is that. In order to continue the revenue streams, we also still have to be competitive in hiring and in retaining staff. And you all know, if you've worked with personnel and for any length of time, that replacing a staff member is a whole other expensive than keeping one who's doing what they're doing and doing it well. So just to put that all into the equation and, and that's how I think about it.
Well, the, the concern that I have constantly, we'll come back to the, the budget discussions and, and compensation of staff is. Our staff are, let me, the wheels go round in the county. Without our staff, we don't have county services. Um, the particular services that our providers. Provide for the county do allow the RHC to make revenue. Because it isn't a required, you know, statutorily required entity that because it was put in place with some wisdom back in the day. And is functioning so well today. It is making revenue that can help support this county, especially in our time of need coming up as we look at lack of funding in other areas and. Drawdowns of funds through the urban rental agencies. And so I think it's trying to have maybe that discussion of how do we stay competitive in our provider market. Especially where we are competing with other like industries, other health clinics. They aren't apples-to-apples county employees because they do have credentials that are unique. Where it's not a state-required duty that they're filling, it's a rural health clinic. And so we have to stay very competitive within that healthcare market. Um. You can't replace these people. Uh, at the same level due to the education requirements and experience and in everything that comes with that and so. I would hate to discourage. As we look at trying to get comparable wages and everything, discourage the use of the funds that are being brought in for revenue to bring up. To stay very competitive in that market so we can continue to recruit. And, and keep a healthy rural health clinic because if we don't have that, then we start going on the downside and. Pretty soon we aren't taking in as much revenue because we don't have the providers to do it because we aren't competitively paying them. You know, it's the double-edged sword i- in a way that if you don't compensate, you don't have. And we've struggled with that since I came on in the last four years and watching. Us be unable to obtain. Securing providers here in Harney County. We're not the most attractive place on earth, I dare say. For anyone to live. Walmart's most people's requirement, they need, you know, and we don't have even a Walmart, you know? So, I mean, knowing where we live and what we're doing here, we are seeing a successful business model because. Unlike any other. Service in the county, this is an actual business. And so I think having a business mind towards this part of our business. Has to be seriously looked at, which I would hope the county administrator could kinda bring some of those business skills to the table. To understand that this is our business model within the county and then we have all these required statutory services. That are filling all of our other departments, but this is the unique part where Harney County has actually got a business. And so we need to treat it like a business and we need to be competitive like a business.
No, but I, I think we have to be careful of them too because is county government or government of any kind supposed to be competitive? Are we supposed to be competing against the private industry out there?
It's not competing against the private industry, it's competing for employees to staff the clinic that we've already established.
There's a reason.
But it's still ultimate, it's still ultimate competi- competition against the local industry.
But the local industry is also tax-based supportive. They're also supported by your tax dollars just as well. And this is actually not supported by our tax dollars because it's creating enough revenue to support itself. Where the other does take in tax dollars, it's a taxing district.
I think the only people you're actually competing against is Briwell and Fitz's office and I can't speak for Fitz, but I'm fine with the competition.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that from you. I didn't wanna say it myself.
I mean, it's all collaborative. That's the other thing, like we even, you know, we're collaborative with home health, we're collaborative with the hospital, we're collaborative with Fitz and. I don't, I, I think I can pretty easily speak for the other physicians, at least in the community. We are happy for whatever can help, right? We need all hands on deck all the time here. And so. I think the, you know, the hospital and I work well together. I'm happy they have how many other doctors they have and if they got more, I'd be super excited. Because it's too much work for all of us and so. Whoever wants to come and wherever they wanna work with me, that would be amazing. Well, and we have a provider who is supposed to start on April first. And some of my concerns um are the lack of HR support. Um, he's coming to make sure he's. Everything's lined out to make this change really easy. I've reached out to HR a couple of times and I don't get a response. Um, everything's done on my side to make sure contracts are filled out. We know when he's starting, he's got his license geared up, DA will start on um getting him insured by. If credentials coming, as you said, HR pieces just makes me nervous. That that won't be handled super well to make sure that he will be here and be. Welcomed as truly.
Well, HR welcomes everybody and works well with everybody. I'm, I'm not gonna entertain that, that.
Okay.
I wanna know, I wanna know specifically, if you're, if you're talking specific deficits in HR, I need to know specific. I, 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 I get innuendo on that all the time, but I'm.
I'm happy to sound it.
Okay, so, so if there's specifics that I can deal with on that, please come and talk to me.
Okay, I'm okay with you now.
So when she's lending that, that conversation to the lack of response time. When you, when you do have a hire and you do have things that need to be in place, she's not see. Receiving the responses in a timely manner and so she's not trying to, you know, downplay anything other than. In a hiring situation, you have a very timely stuff.
Somebody coming, you know?
Or pretty quickly, we'll probably have fun on our face. To a newcomer and, and that has happened in the past and we want to prevent that from happening.
Yeah, that's fine.
And we're trying to achieve this, so.
So, when the. Local council of governments. Uh, that you're trying to contract with, and by the way, if they're so hard to contact, you might need to go somewhere else. It seems like. It's been, they, they take their time getting back to you, but.
It's been three weeks since I talked to her last, actually, and I sent the email on Friday. And I believe, I don't know, I got a, a automatic reply that she was out of the office, but. But I, I agree. If I don't start to get some movement on it, then I'm gonna look at one of the other uh entities that I. Reached out to.
At any rate.
One reason I went with them is we're a member with them, so we didn't get a crosscut. And the product that they were gonna, gonna provide back to us was what I wanted, so. And if timeliness has gotta be a factor there.
I know that you um. Probably already did this, but like they say, with, with the healthcare. Employees of the county. Or at least some, some of them, if not um need to, if that kind of wage scale has to. Factoring all that stuff those professionals should know how to do to create stuff. Make sure that we ask for that too.
Well, we already have a, a specific wage scale for nurses. We already have one for nurse practitioners. We don't have one for physician's assistants because they're on contract. So, I mean, as far as the professional side of things, we are, I mean, we do have. Wage scales for those.
Good, I don't know, I just wanted to mention that if, if that was something that just needed to be double-checked or asked for in contract. When we contracted someone to do this. If it's done, fine.
We try to keep these sessions in an hour. I don't wanna cut anybody off if there's anything to say, but uh, last call.
So I think what you're saying is you do have current funding to go out for some additional hires at this point that would help alleviate that administrative.
Some of the lesser duties.
Allow time for us to do those.
And so you will be trying to achieve those hires.
That re- yeah, the request is one up.
Now, now that you feel maybe hopefully we're slightly less muddy in, in direction.
So that was my ask. Is this one up to you? That would be community health worker and health advocate. And already is funded.
And then, and then is it your intent then to, is it your intent or your proposal that then we stay under the current model with yourself and? Vicky?
For now.
With the extra compensation and.
But to review in three months to make sure that. I guess it's just a wait to see what you guys are doing with your admin. It's not that we don't, we don't wanna do this forever for sure.
In my, in my view, whether we. Whether we have, get the administrator or health administrator or not, I still, I would like to have a public health director slash whatever. Um. One person. I appreciate very much what you're doing. I'm not saying you're not doing a great job, I am, but. In general, I would like to have a public health administrator who. Is someone who, who can really. Take all that on. So it's nothing against having both of you work collaboratively and so efficiently apparently and, and doing a good job, but. That's just my preference at this time.
So I was late and I apologize for that. Maybe you already discussed this a little bit, but I was here during Cheryl Kenniston's tenure. I have worked in both home health hospice and public health. And I'm, I just don't know if it was thrown out that the burden of maintaining competency. In that huge area is very time-consuming and very difficult. And so you're gonna lose some of your efficiencies if you truly tied all of that into one person. To be able to move to all the trainings that are required, all of the networking that should happen. Um, can easily put you over an FTE in both places, just trying to keep up.
What both places?
Home health hospice and public health.
Why was just talking public health?
Right, right, right. I'm saying in general. I wasn't responding to you, I was just making a final comment because I was sorry.
Okay, so sure. And I, and I'm just, I'm just being flat out telling you, I thought it was home, okay? It, it doesn't necessarily mean I might not. Know to change my mind a little more.
So then with that, would you be looking at making that director the public health administrator? I think you have to be really careful about your vocabulary here because there's a director. And there's an administrator and I think we need to be really careful about what we're talking about.
Can they both be the same person?
They can absolutely both be the same person.
The downside.
Uh.
Is it too much? Is it too much for one person to, to?
Have both houses. And I think that's one of the things that I, I wanted to clarify before we end this meeting is. So these two are sharing the director role. Bill's doing the administrator role. On paper. Um. I hope it's okay to say that for the most part, these guys are doing the administrator role.
Absolutely, that, absolutely, I'm not gonna.
Right, and I'm doing the administrator role work. There are weekly meetings that I don't think Bill has had the. Time to, to attend. There are things that need to be signed off. Um, and so. So I think we just need to be really clear about what we're saying there. I think it would be much easier if the administrator was within the health department. Because a lot of the stuff that has to be emailed and signed and fast and fast. Um. Gets, it gets real muddy and also I. Would say that Bill doesn't. Have the time to fully understand everything he's signing, is that fair? Like, a lot of these things are very public health specific.
They are, they are, and, and I, and I, to be quite frank, I rely on the advice of the professionals. Um, anything that's out of the norm goes to the county council and I have them review um before I sign. The normal stuff, the, the um, the amendments, which I think we're up to amendment six or seven or something right now. Yeah, uh, those, those are pretty boy, they're like, I'm not gonna, you know, it's formality, I think, is. They're, they're telling us what we're gonna get, so we're just signing it and saying, yeah, okay, this is what we're gonna get. So, to some degree, yeah.
I, I think the financial stuff you're probably like well aware of, but some of the more health, health stuff is. Um, and so, you know, I think it would be great to have a director. Who also did the administrator role, but they would have to be public health educated. To really understand that role and I think.
Is public health education, if you, if you know, answer this. Very different. Between the different states of the United States. I mean, if someone was. An applicant from out of state, but they had. A lot of experience in a different state, are they similar, they?
I think public health is public health, but the way that the state funded it and administered it are different, is that fair?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think, yes, somebody can come from out of state, but I think to understand, you know, what PE fifty-one is and all of that, you have to be.
Understood.
And if that person had the time, there is training that is um given to them that they, you know, they can do. Right through work and I think it's actually you're supposed to, as a new administrator, you're supposed to attend.
Decent training?
Yeah, it's okay.
Pretty good.
Yeah. So, so again, to clarify my vision, the LPA, the administrator, the public health director. Um. It's all wrapped up into this public health service or health services administrator position that I'm talking about. So that one person becomes, wears multiple hats.
And that's what you were speaking to.
Kind of referring to, I just wanna real quick for definition-wise, Sarah is right, when you talk about health administrator. The title of public health director originated here. Almost no other county uses that. And prior to my time term as public health director. My predecessor Cheryl Kenniston was called Deputy Public Health Administrator. And then for various reasons that got changed, but in my mind, that actually clarifies things. Because the Deputy Public Health Administrator. Works with the formal administrator, but also runs the department. Many public health departments only have one title because they have enough staff and enough. Um, proportional volume to have separate individual coordinators of all the services. Who then report to that cer- that person. In our setting, with. Smaller funding streams, lesser ability to hire full-time FTEs or need. The public health director has absorbed some of those funding streams on an administrator level. As well as the overall grant administration piece. I don't know if that helps, but. I don't think.
And title director.
I bet it hasn't gotten complicated over the years.
Oh, yeah.
So, so, yeah, so, so titles, titles aside.
Yes.
Just the work that needs to be done is, is what I'm looking at, you know, so really regardless of what the title is, what we come up with and decide to call somebody. It's the person that serves in that role and performs those duties. Public health administrator, director, local public health administrator, whatever, whatever all that, those titles are, except I think by statute, the local, the LPA is gonna be an LPA.
Yes.
Um, but.
It's, it's hired and appointed and so there's just not that recognition.
Yeah. So, so that's my vision, is that that person performs that role. Forms those duties as an umbrella management over our health services, healthcare services within Harney County. Um.
I think it would be a very, very unique individual who would know rural health, home health, hospice, public health. I believe I am the only person in this community who is actually in all of those places. And so you and I have had this conversation before when you talked about it and I said something like, wow, that's gonna be a really unique unicorn. We better ask what color we like.
Yeah.
Um, cuz I just don't know. I can think of maybe two other people I know who I think could do it. But don't have the inherent knowledge to do it.
So again, my, my idea too is that, that there's still a clinic manager, there's still a health department manager, there's still a home health. Hospice manager. Those are the expert level people. The person at the thirty thousand foot level is the overall management and if those are. With, with the knowledge, I mean, you still, like, that's my deficit. I don't have that knowledge, that healthcare industry knowledge. But somebody at that level who has the healthcare knowledge and when you. Mention an acronym or an agency or whatever, they know who we're talking about. I don't know.
I, I have a question though, um. If a public health administrator does the public health administration that everyone's discussed here. But home health and hospice is different and rural health clinic is different and you've got ahead of each of those who. Is in fact the director or manager, whatever you wanna call them, okay? I mean, when I said earlier, when I said when those agencies meet with us. Monthly and we just say, how's your staffing going? How's your workload going? Any weird. Requirements coming down at you, you know, pretty soon everybody kinda knows what's going on. Anybody wanna ask each other? Can you borrow something? You know, is there any? Problems we need to do offline? I mean, do you think that would be helpful or not? Is that not needed? Is that, I mean, I, I just feel like the home health hospice piece. What is the benefit of? Them reporting to the administrator kind of thing or the RHC and I, I would like that direct contact, not out of micro-management, but just out of. More heads together to go to nod together, go, that's good, or how about this and then, oh, you know, I just think they don't have to be long meetings, they don't have to be.
Well, I, I think that what you're talking about is strategic planning, you know, for, for us as the local public health authority, you know.
I do.
And we've acquired a property, you know, next to home health hospice with goals of ever finding funding to actually develop and.
Does it make sense?
I would almost propose quarterly meetings with us, but monthly meetings between the three department heads.
Something like that.
You know, and I, we can continue to check in. I am, I'm opposed of the unicorn model just because I don't feel. That it'd be easy to find one or replicate one.
I think it'd be really hard to, if we found one and they didn't stay, I mean, just be always trying to chase someone who would even wanna do that.
Which is what we've been doing in the past.
Right.
Yeah, and that's where, you know, recognizing. Yeah, and that's where, you know, recognizing that we have competent department head in one of the three departments. And that they do need to just continue to work closely together. I think that that can, you know, always get better. You guys are excellent professionals. I know that that will, you know, happen. I have all confidence in that. And then perhaps quarterly meetings with us, because I do think that we need to just stay informed. And be able to, to see what is coming in the future for opportunities to actually. Update facilities, you know, those bigger picture things that, that do intersect with our roles. And trying to make sure that we're supporting you guys and staying informed, um, you know.
I think that's the point. I, I think that that's what we need. We, I don't think we need another layer. I think the only thing that. That we don't get with what we currently have, I think we actually have a great relationship, and I think that we talked to Matt and Matt helps us as much as is needed. I think the only thing that's missing there is the LPH administrator who has the public health experience to do this stuff. So I think, and you've said many times, like, you don't feel as comfortable with it, you don't, like, this is not your thing. Um, we don't.
I don't have the capacity for it either, amongst everything else I do. I don't have the capacity for. Time capacity.
You know, which is a model that we're turning for, you know, like everybody, just because historically they've done that, you know, it's like, wow, how much can you? Pull for one person, you know, there's only so much time in the day. Um, you know, so I, I think that it's written, the things that you have written into the budget should be pursued, and then we have that check in to see. You know, if you're able to fulfill uh those other. Funded positions, and then you're able as administrators, as department heads, to be able to pull it off if we can figure out. How to go out for the local help, local public health administrator piece as a partial FTE. You know, like, I think that that's what I'd like to kind of see you guys come back to us with, is like, how to achieve. That, if you're able to fulfill some of these other hires. And then look at restructuring, who, who has those credentials? How would you go about getting that in place?
One last question, do you know any relatively small frontier county? That is, got it structured kind of well amongst eastern Oregon or?
There are several counties that have it structured relatively well. Um, I mean, you wanna think about who else has an RHC, John Day. Right, the other one that has an RHC in their health.
It's just, it's sort of a touch base with some other commissions, you should just say, how's it going and how you guys doing?
Very different though, how they're set up.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
Any others that um, on the public health realm, administration realm? Uh, seem to do it fine without too much.
Um, LaGrande has a, needs their title. It's got a strange title to it.
Okay, no, I just, I mean, sometimes just a mission.
Central for human development.
Right, and that's Pat Lukey, right? That's who, Pat Lukey, Dr. Lukey, um, on the.
No, he's on the other side.
It's Carrie Brugati, who's the administrator out of LaGrande, and I, I don't know where.
Yeah, yeah, you got Lukey as a, one of the physicians, and I can't, I thought he was LaGrande, I must be wrong. And he is the administrator for their, he's both their health officer and their administrator.
Which is something that is. I, I just thought, if you, if you, that's helpful, just to hear that some of them. There's always gonna be a little difference. We're not, we're not.
Just back to what you said, so if we're gonna go with the public health director, if we have the LPHA part with it, I think would make more sense. Than doing a public health director and having something else on top of something else.
I do need to.
Yeah.
How it's structured isn't.
Yeah, so just have.
So, i- in your past experience here in Horney County, I believe my predecessor and, and. Um, Judge Donalds, Judge Grasky were both the LPHAs. Why did they choose to go with that structure? Do you know? Historically?
You mean as the um admin, because they were grandfathered in, back at a time when.
You know, did Judge White, was he the LPHA as well, administrator?
He was the administrator as well.
So this is a practice that's just continued on for.
Yeah, and, and the idea was you need somebody who is qualified, who's trained. And frontier counties were enabled to solicit that kind of talent, so. In the meantime, we put in the structure where you could be grandfathered in if you were the existing. Um, head of the LPHA or the, not, uh.
Head of the authority.
Authority, thank you. The local public health authority. And it was never meant to be a permanent thing. But it was kind of allowing. It's just moved on. And I wanna say real quickly too, um, Judge Hart, that. Um, in other counties, it has not been the judge. Multnomah, um. County for years used their HR person, who was the public health administrator. Cause that was just somebody who had accrued experience over time. So, you know, there's no perfect model, but I do think having an elected physician try to step in and fill that. Where is the job description for each of those elected positions that says that this is what you need to have, because it doesn't exist? So in that sense, it makes much more sense to hire somebody and. Solicit the talent and try to ensure some continuity across time.
And I agree. That's why I was just was asking though, if you knew of any reasoning that they had in that structure.
Many other small counties did the same, and they were always, you know, a, a dollar, a day short and a dollar behind on, um, everything else, so. We're not making that bad. They all struggled together.
Sure. Matt, did you feel like you had enough uh opportunity to say something or a question?
Learned a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Appreciate you guys, buddy.
So what did we want? We want enough of our base case.
I would love to hear when she, I, you know, were able to have a successful hire in those currently funded positions. And then, you know, kind of get some of that um up and running. If, you know, you could then come back and provide us some feedback at that point, and I think this is one of those situations where. We have lots to learn from you guys and what goes on in your world. This is always helpful for me when we have work sessions with you guys, um, because. I've never been a part of, you know, healthcare services, and so it's very important for us to take the time to listen to you guys and. Really see, you know, where we can help you in our roles, um, we, we hope to be complimentary, you know, in that way. So, I think just kind of checking back in, let's, you guys feel like. You have some more, well, obviously, there's already things written into the budget to be executed, and so I think that that would be the goal. At this time is to try to execute.
And I, I know from the budget standpoint, you know, if these um, grant funded. Positions that are also part of the modernization, everything else, if they, you know, what is the expectation? For the county to continue to keep that as a position, if, if, you know, the grant funding. Gets greatly reduced or goes away, because.
Being upfront when you hire this physician, say, hey, you know, we've got three years for funding for this position, if it ends, then we cannot renew.
Process and advertisement.
Yeah, and something nice about community health workers is they can bill their available service. So in three years, they could be supporting their own salary, that's true. And I think we'll implement um with Matt and try to meet monthly so that we have time to have that discussion. But he tried to catch up with me and I was on the phone, and I wanna be able to have that time, so Will doesn't need time to.
Yeah, appreciate that. One thing that's coming down the line is uh EBB, it's electronic verification within the homes. It's uh, gonna cost a little bit of money on it. Um, every provider has to do it. Uh, right now, we're doing it longhand. Clear down to our longitude and latitude, we have to send it in the state, we don't get paid. Right now, it's just Medicare or Medicaid, but we do it across the board for just home health right now. It will affect providers legally going home. It, you know.
Is that something that could be done on apps, on tablets or?
You can't do it offline, you can do it on tablets, but we're looking at, I think, budgeting three thousand dollars to get it going. Because that's tablets, and then you're gonna need your plans with them to get the internet and the patient's home. They have to physically sign, and it will all be time stamped, digital. Problem is, none of these. Electronic medical record systems that we use have implemented any of this, so we're having to do it all by longhand, send it in the state. And in about six to eight years, it'll be federal government wide, and they'll do it for every entity, home health and hospice. I imagine your clinics, anybody that goes in the homes will have to do it too. They won't pay, so that's something that's coming down, um, yeah, but anyhow.
Nice thing is you let the bigger organizations break the ice on that.
They're quitting their jobs. They're leaving home health because of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway.
Does um, does it have to be inside the home, or say we utilize the main on, and the vans at the property? And you have wifi within the vans, that would be a.
That's all stuff that we could coordinate with, by every discipline, so our physical therapists, our OT. Um, anybody that's directly contracted with home health going in, doing home health services. Um, if Sarah goes in to see somebody on our behalf, uh, once it gets to say hospice, same thing will, will apply, so. Yeah.
Home health does not require a medical director, so I'm only over house.
Yeah.
Right now. I ended up covering a bunch of stuff for home health, but.
So, that's the biggest thing on our end right now, as far as.
That's pretty big.
One of the big things, yeah. And it was supposed to start January one, so now our office manager's going back and. And we have permission from the Urban Health Authority, the, the gal that's head of this particular program. Uh, who fell on the sword, so to speak, because the person that was in charge of it just dropped everything and left. It's a mess right now.
So is there gonna be mandated types of technology to use to be able to verify those?
Eventually, yeah, yeah, I mean, our program we use right now has something set up for the signatures. But there's no program to generate it to send to the state, cause there's like fifty different programs amongst all the different home health within Oregon, so. There's no one program yet.
There's like seven hundred different electronic medical records in Oregon in the EOCO region, which is just.
So all these people will have to come together to make one big.
Then all that information.
Or they'll just fragment it the way we do it, which is not helpful, but we could just let Epic do it.
So, follow up, do we wanna schedule, do we wanna schedule a follow up for sessions?
March, what would be the um, the purpose for it, the goal rather? Just, just continue to talk.
Mr. Showman, and that's for?
Yeah, you know, once they get some of these positions that are currently budgeted and fulfill the people to distribute some duties, to have them come back and check in and. And, and give us a, a follow up of how it's going, and then just see, you know, what that further need is as far as staffing at that point. Once you're able to fulfill that.
And Matt, you can bring up whatever you wanna bring up, you know.
Well, I don't, you know, again, the search for staff, um. It's, next meeting then is basically kind of dependent on those positions being, getting filled, recruitment being filled.
Funding was um, on a two-year or three-year. Two-year.
Two-year.
Okay, so it, it'd be easily continued into the next budget cycle on the county side, that, okay.
So if you want to do quarterly, that would be June? That should be the plan.
So my, as far as structures, as far as structural, organizational structure, we're just gonna continue status the way we are?
Yeah, because as they were talking, if you're able to get some of these other positions and then hand off some of your other duties, you know, then that lightens the load. Uh, you know, the current situation that we have, when we try to figure out.
So that's, that's what I'm asking though, are we working towards hiring another position to relieve some of the load from Kelly and Vicky? That they didn't stay in the role that they're in with the increase, with the um.
I would like to be a public health administrator with whatever pieces we continue to hear. You know, it ought to be, be budgeted for next, for this coming um, budget year. It is budgeted.
Direct line is budgeted.
Yeah, and just change, change the.
I budgeted this year at a hundred thousand dollars in the view of doing this healthcare administrator. Position, healthcare administrator, healthcare services, I budgeted a hundred thousand, just to put something in there, cause it could have been. Anywhere between ninety and over six-figure, over a hundred thousand, but I put a hundred thousand in there, so we can carry forward the same hundred thousand dollars in the next budget.
Okay, but we'll need to talk more just on what, what we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, with the scope of that position.
As a physician, like, how is it funded? So if it's overseeing, you know, home health and hospice, are they cutting in their budget? So, to give money to that, or is it, public health is really the only one that is required to have that, so is public health just funding it? So, that would be a question as well.
If it's, if it's not gonna, if it's not gonna be healthcare services administrator type of a position, then I wouldn't burden home health or help, home health hospice. With, with that part of it.
Right.
Um, if. Cause, cause basically, the reason that RHC, or this is what I've been told, the reason that RHC was, was created and brought in. Was to help fund public health. That was the funding mechanism to generate funds and fund public health. Um, so again, my vision was then to put everything under one budget or one fund, and then that RHC can help fund home health hospice as well. If, if we do that.
Transfer.
If there, if we do that, then, and it's under one fund, then there's no need, it, it's all out of the same fund, there's no need to take a piece from. This department, a piece from this department, and this department to fund that position.
I, I just, I just want the public health adminis- administrator position to be created and to do the public health administration piece. Without it being two people who already have jobs.
That's the director.
Ands. We're not gonna call it director, are we?
No, but there's two different names. There's the directors that run the health office.
Administrator.
And the administrator, which is Bill.
He's currently the local.
Well, what they're doing, what they're doing, we need to take that off their plate in the future. And have somebody else do it, and have that job as public health administrator be what it needs to be in Horney County. You know, with everybody's working together, um. How we get there and how soon we get there, I don't know, but I would like to see that. I just, I, I really appreciate you all doing that. I just. Know that it's, um.
I don't see the current model as a sustainable model. Even yourselves told me quite some time ago that you didn't see it as, as sustainable for yourselves.
I mean, the higher, higher level, yeah, the higher level, and just to make sure you're forecasting and, um. You know, there's, it's all, we're doing the busy work, we need somebody who actually.
Right, right.
But if we can at least.
Correct, it's funded to, to achieve.
And I'm remembering now why the RHC and public health was pulled out of the general.
Local good reason.
Administrator that would also administrate.
Yeah, I had to look and see what the bal- what the balance is. I, I know approximately what extra compensation Virginia and Kelly will get a month, but I have.
You know, point time, and so when you hire someone, you'd still have that remainder of the budget to utilize. We shouldn't be going over that one.
Are we, are we good to hire this position?
Which position, the, the?
The community health, community health worker half.
You have a grant, you have a grant funding to do so, correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then they could hire, put together the job description to hire the local public health administrator, the.
Director.
Administrator.
Make sure we get a couple.
I'm gonna say, we need, we need, before we go to that management. Position, we need to have a little bit more discussion and understand the full scope of that position before we go to that position.
Oh, yeah, that's, I was thinking, probably have a template.
Do you already have stuff you want us to start thinking about?
Job description that was.
You can shoot it to us.
Oh, yeah.
Just put draft on it and send it. I know we sent a while back, but.
Yeah, we have a job description and everything for.
Well, and I think that's what will disfloat in that job description, but I think it just.
Been a while.
Well, I think that I, again, in my, I wasn't thinking about it. I wanted that position, my vision was to be an overarching umbrella position. And I hadn't floated it through home health hospice to have their input on the job description before we, before. And I hadn't floated it through home health hospice to have their input on the job description before we, before I flew it, that was another reason why I, why I rescinded it, pulled it back. But I think most of what's in that job description that you provided to me, that draft one, which we did add a little bit to it. Um, is mostly applicable to RHC and public health, mostly.
So they would be.
If if we do an over overarching position, yes, they would need to have input on her, or we would need to at least make sure that the essential duties in that job description. Encompass home health hospice as that thirty thousand foot management, but I'm not hearing that that's where we'll go.
I don't think we need to, but then that's time.
It it but that the that person with them, once it in place, would be coordinating. Monthly and quarterly with us, monthly with. But we keep that going for now and then eventually be able to pick up another person.
So so monthly, quarterly, um, um. Communication would be that position and then Matt from home health hospice.
Why would they call three department heads, cause.
But if, but if that person or that position is not over home health hospice and is representing RHC and home health.
He would need to come. Remember when we had one, maybe, I think you were on, um, might have been when. No, I can't remember his name. Nick, when Nick was here at one point and Jolene was still up and um. I think we held one. Health board, local, you know, we only have one. Stuff and, I mean, there is a board that we're supposed to have at local level, excuse me, that we we really have never functioned, that could be that. That could be the quarterly meeting, that could be quarterly meeting, and and then we're doing that too.
I mean, our QWAB program we have, which is a huge thing. You guys technically should be on the bullet, we're supposed to meet for that as well.
And we could have it, you know, relatively.
I like how I do.